Good evening. I'd like to call the November 21st work session of the Methacton Board of School Directors to Order. Please rise for the pledge. The public is hereby advised of the audio and video recording of this meeting for the purposes of rebroadcasting. By way of executive session notice, the board met virtually in an executive session on October 25th, sorry, on, oh, that one, okay, on October 25th, 2023, for the purpose of consulting with the solicitor regarding information and strategy in connection with potential litigation involving legal expenses and the district's prior special counsel for right-to-know matters. By way of attendance, all board members are in attendance. Now it's time for recognition of guests and scheduled speakers, Dr. Zerbi.
Thank you, Madam President. This month, we have the Act One Index, we have the Spirit of Methacton Awards, and we have school board director recognition. But before we start on any of those, I'd like to make a special announcement. We just found out yesterday that one of ours has achieved something pretty extraordinary, and I'll turn the microphone over to Mr. Regina, I'm sorry, to Dr. Regina.
Thank you, Dr. Zerbi. Yet last night, I successfully defended my dissertation, and now am Dr. Regina, so thank you.
Congratulations, Dr. Regina from the board.
In terms of this evening, the Act One Index, given that the Act One budgetary deadline of January 4, 2024, requires that the board pass a resolution or choose not to pass a resolution, but certainly needs to act one way or another, the administration is recommending that we place a motion on the December 4, 2024 voting meeting agenda to approve a resolution not to exceed the Act One Index for the 2024-2025 school year. Mr. Bricker?
Thank you, Dr. Zerbi. Okay, good evening. So, in the packet that you have in front of you, we have some information regarding the Act One. First, we want to start off with what is the Act One Index? The Act One Index was a taxpayer relief in 2006, specifically June 27, 2006, that limits by law the amount that the school district can raise its property taxes or millage rate. That index is calculated by the Pennsylvania Department of Education, and it's made up of two different factors: the state weekly average, state average weekly wage, and a federal employment cost index for the elementary and secondary schools. When this is sent down, this percentage is the max that the school district, without exception, can apply to the millage rate. On the next page, what you have is where the Act Index is for '24-'25. For the '24-'25 fiscal year, the Act One Index is set at 5.3%, meaning the district is limited to increasing the millage rate by more than, no more than, 5.3% without an exception or referendum vote. If a school district believes that they have need for greater number than Act One, they could apply for an exception, or they can go out to referendum. Typically, Methacton school districts' referendum or exceptions that they have are either the special education or the Peasers' exceptions. This year, when we did the calculation, Methacton does not qualify for the Peasers or the Pennsylvania State Employees Retirement System exception. However, Methacton does qualify for the special education exception due to increasing costs associated with special education services. This exception increases the total allowed increase in property taxes to $1.1 million, or the Act One limit would increase to 6.53%. Historically, on the next slide, Methacton school districts remain below the Act One Index, with the exception of the 2016-2017 school year, which was filed, files a year with no tax increase. If Methacton had issued tax increases consistent with the Act One Index, the district's millage rate would be 10% higher in a '23-'24 fiscal year than it is currently. And then there, on the bottom that, you can see the chart is the Act One Index and where the school district's actual tax increases were over a 10-year span. On the next slide, we have the process and recommendation. The Pennsylvania presidential primary is on, turncates the Act One budgetary timelines for school districts. The deadline for the school boards to determine if they plan to go over the Act One Index is January 4, 2024. The school district has three different options: one, to vote to approve a resolution not to exceed the Act One Index of 5.3%. Two, vote to apply the special education exception up to $1.1 million or a tax increase up to 6.53%. Or three, vote to exceed the Act One Index and the exception limits by going out to referendum. The recommendation that we have for you tonight is, given the Act One budgetary deadline of January 4, the administration is recommending that we place a motion on the December 4, 2024 voting meeting agenda to approve a resolution not to exceed the Act One Index for '24-'25 school year. On your next slide, the next steps would be, December 4, 2023, we'd approve the resolution 23-4, which is to not exceed the Act One Index. Through January 24 through April 24, we provide updates on the budgeting process and status to the finance committee and the school board. April to May, we would then propose the final budget presentation. The board would vote on approving the proposed final budget. May to June, we would then have the final budget presentation. The board then votes on approving the final budget for the '24-'25 school year, and the information is then sent out to the task collectors with the Approved Militaried and the Homestead Act. And that concludes my presentation.
Thank you, Mr. Bricker. Are there any questions from members of the board to my right? Mr. Winters?
Not a question. I just want to support the recommendation from the administration. We talked about this at the finance meeting, and the belief is, certainly, we could put this up for vote for next week, but it makes sense for the after-reorganization for the nine that are sitting at that point, since they'll be owning the budget process from then on.
Any other comments from members to my right? Seeing none to my left, Ms. Cancro?
I would just want to add that it is a, we have in the past have always voted in this way, because we do work from this point on to really think about everything that we're doing as far as budgeting. So, just so everyone is aware that this is a common practice that we've done, is to vote for, that we would take the Act, not to exceed the Act One Index, so.
Ms. Alston?
Yeah, I just want to go back and address the issue of the special education exception that we are eligible for. And I would like to see, I know that our special education costs have historically, have been going up, and our taxes have been generally holding the line. So I would just be interested in, as a presentation to the board, how they've gone up, how many more students we've serviced, and the cost. And then, because I think that's important for the taxpayers to know that even though these costs are going up, that, you know, where our tax, our tax millage increases, our millage increases have stayed. So I would just like to see that and kind of a history of that. Please.
Thank you. Are there any other questions, Ms. Perdue? Mr. Winters?
One other clarification. So, for people to understand, the reason that it is a little earlier in the process, as Mr. Bricker pointed out, the election being moved up, the primary election being a presidential primary, is being moved up into earlier into April, and I believe it's 90, 100 days, whatever the exact period is, that we have to make this decision. So that is the trigger point. Ideally, for a new board, this would be something that we would be voting on in the normal time period, which would be later on in January. So I just wanted to point that the only thing that's really different from Mrs. Cancro's point, point is that the presidential, every four years, sort of screws up this process for Pennsylvania.
Any other questions from members to my left, to my right? Seeing no other questions. Thank you, Mr. Bricker. That ends guests and scheduled speakers for this evening. We will then go into reports in next week's meeting. We then would open it up for public comment, approve the board meeting minutes, and then we are on page two of eight, which is fiscal items, and we'll turn that over to Mr. Bricker.
Thank you, Dr. Zerbi. This month, for your approval, we have the list of bills, the treasurer's report. We also have two change orders. The first one, associated with the Planetarium Electrical Contractor, an amount of $8,820, which is a credit for unused allowances. The next one is a change order for the Planetarium for the mechanical contractor, an amount of $4,670.75 for ductwork, power installation, and a credit for unused allowances. And then finally, we have a student activity account, to approve the student activity account for the High School Warrior Performance Group.
Thank you, Mr. Bricker. Any questions on fiscal items to members to my left? Seeing none, members to my right? Seeing none. Thank you, Mr. Bricker. We will then move on to personnel items. Dr. Sergini?
Good evening. Thank you, Dr. Zerbi, for the consideration of the board this month. We have the following personnel items: two resignations classified, Kimberly Bear, personal care assistant at Woodland. We thank Kimberly for her service to Methacton, and we wish her well. And Karen O'Neill, secretary to the assistant principal at the high school, resignation for retirement. Karen has served Methacton School District in multiple capacities for nearly 34 years. Her dedication to students and staff have made her an invaluable resource to our entire community. I had the good fortune to work with Karen during our mutual time at the high school, and I can attest to her steadfast stewardship of the East Wing office. We thank Karen for her time and service to Methacton, and we wish her all the very best in retirement. We have three employments classified, all for paraprofessional positions, Susan Millar at Eagleville, and Brenda Bowen and Eileen Blatner, both at Skyview. We welcome Susan, Brenda, and Eileen to the Methacton family. We have three changes of status classified, Heather Cornman from personal care assistant to secretary to the principal at Eagleville, Luciana Boe from recess assistant at Arrowhead to personal care assistant at Arrowhead, and Danielle Venezia from paraprofessional at Skyview to personal care assistant at Woodland. We thank Heather, Lucy, and Danielle for taking on these new roles. We have four uncompensated leaves professional, Melissa Y. Tunis and Alexis Otto, both special education teachers at the high school, Colleen Redding, special education teacher at Skyview, and Jenny Falco, mathematics teacher at the high school, for the dates that are specified. One uncompensated leave classified, April Nguyen, recess assistant at Worcester, for the date specified. One sabbatical leave, Danielle Smith, school psychologist at Worcester and Skyview for the '24-'25 school year. And supplemental contracts for DEI liaisons, the work of the curriculum instruction and assessment and pupil services departments, Boost Tutor virtual help desk, sponsorship of the multicultural club, work on the Veterans' Wall of Honor at the high school, four additional winter season coaches, and the design of the set for the Arkola musical. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Sergini. Any questions for Dr. Sergini on personnel items to my left? Ms. Alston?
Hi, thank you. I just have a couple on supplemental contracts. The DEI liaisons, I was just wondering, in general, if we could get, this isn't really about the contract, but just in general, if we could get a report from them. I just would be interested to know, you know, what they're doing, how they're, you know, just kind of, what kind of work are they doing, just as a point of interest. I just think that that would be good to maybe present to the new board as we bring them on for, just to, so that everyone knows how the DEI is working in our schools, that we have the building liaisons, the kind of work that they do, that kind of thing.
That's an excellent suggestion. Dr. Regina, we'll ask Ms. Washington, in her next report, to update the community and the board on that?
We can add that to the January report, yes.
And then I was just wondering about the Boost Tutors and how utilized that service is.
It is being utilized at this time. The curriculum instruction and assessment department works very closely with the Boost Tutors. They schedule time. There's also the opportunity to just go into the sessions, so it is being utilized.
Any other questions?
Just a quick one. Number 11, does that have a name with it, or not yet? The winter season seventh grade boys' basketball coach?
It does. I apologize. I'll have that corrected for the.
Well, you have a little bit busy in your HR report, so I understand.
Good catch. Thank you. Anyone else to my left? Seeing none to my right? Ms. Clary?
So I had a question on the Boost Tutors as well. So, Dr. Sergini, do you know if that, or Dr. Zerbi, in finance, we were talking about the help desk, so it's unrelated to the help desk grant that we have? These are two unrelated items?
So there is, there is a virtual help desk, and then there is the summer, there are summer programs, which is their summer boost, and then there's boost during the school year. So is this boost, is this boost during the school year, I imagine?
Correct.
Okay, so the money, this money, we won't be able to apply to the grant that we have?
No, we will.
Okay, that's really the heart of my question. So, so I think it was like $15,000 or something left, so this $9,000 is coming out of that bucket?
Yes.
Thank you. Okay, great. And then the other question I had was more of interest for myself. The Wall of Honor, Marian McCully, I don't know who she is. Do you, can anyone tell me?
She's one of our art teachers, and she's actually the art department coordinator, and she's in charge of the Wall of Honor. When a Methacton either staff member or a former student is nominated for a tile on the Wall of Honor at the high school, she is in charge of creating those.
Gotcha. All right, that makes sense. Thank you.
Any other questions, personnel to my right? Any other question on personnel, going once, twice? All right, thank you, Dr. Sergini. We have no items for next week on curriculum programs, but then we have policy. Dr. Regina?
Thank you, Dr. Zerbi. For this evening, we have a few new policies for first read. The one with only substantive changes would be the student recruitment, one which added some language for military recruiters and some secondary language on sending notification out to families. The others were all just grammatical changes and some spacing edits. For a second read, there are no changes to the 17 policies on second read. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Regina. Any questions on policy to members to my right, to my left? Seeing no questions. Thank you, Dr. Regina. It's coming off my tongue pretty easily, isn't it? I haven't messed up yet. Under other gifts and donations, we need, we are asking the board to approve a generous donation from district family towards special education resources at Arrowhead Elementary School, an amount of $5,000. To approve the generous donation from the Schweitzer Engineering through employee Uday Patel, a corporate gift towards math and science items at our collaring immediate school, an amount of $100. We have four trips listed, one to approve the high school indoor track and field trip to participate in the Bishop Loughlin Games from December 17 through the 18 in Staten Island, New York. Approve the girls' high school basketball trip to the Boardwalk Classic, December 27 and 28 in Wildland, New Jersey. Approve the high school wrestling trip on December 29 and 30 at Conestoga High School. And approve the high school cheerleading trip on February 23, 25 to Ocean City Convention Center in Ocean City, Maryland. And then, under 13C, we have transportation. Approve the following drivers as part of the transportation employee roster for '23-'24 school year as listed. And then for 13D, we have the pay survey. That is to authorize the administration to work with the Pennsylvania Youth Survey Project to administer the 2023 pay survey to students in grades six, eight, 10, and 12 on December 5, 2023, at no cost to the district. Any questions on matters listed under other to my left? Ms. Alston?
Just one about the survey. I know it's been our practice in the district to make sure parents are aware of the survey, they know how to opt out of the survey, should they want to do that, and just making sure that that all took place.
Yeah, that is a, with your approval next week, the communications will be put forward, and it's a requirement of our participation for that mechanism and the opt-out mechanism to take place. Other questions? Ms. Graff?
Yeah, my question is under 13A, number one. How is that donation, where is that donation going, and how is that financial gift managed? Maybe Mr. Bricker can answer that?
So that was a donation from an individual within the community to, specifically to the Arrowhead Special Education teacher. They will be using that for materials and information at Arrowhead for special education students. It was very specific along that line.
Okay, and then a follow-up question, sort of the same question on the second gift, and how do we sort of track that to make sure that it gets to the math and science items? Was it like a donation of items worth $100, or was it $100 to purchase specific items?
So that one, I don't know how specific it was, but as far as the tracking, I track every donation that comes in and where it's being used for and the expenditures.
Great, thank you.
Any other questions under other to my left? Seeing none others to my right, Ms. Clary?
Just real quick on the pay survey. So, once the parent opts in their child, the kids can skip, my understanding is when the kids have the survey in front of them on their Chromebook or whatever, if they want to, they can skip certain questions. Is that accurate?
That is correct.
And are they told that upfront, or is it?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Kathy, I just wanted to add, I've administered the test often, and you're, like, sometimes a kid will be like, I don't know what that is, just skip it. Oh, do I, just skip it? It's very, very low-key.
Any other questions under other to my left or right? Seeing none others, turn them back over to Madam President.
Thank you, Dr. Zerbi. Next, we have dates for board members' calendars. I don't see anything listed here, but the, we do have a meeting on Monday, December 4 at 7:00 p.m. for board reorganization. Oh, we, yes, we, yeah, we have the next meeting on the 28th, our voting meeting on November 28, and then Monday, December 4 for the board reorganization, and then a regular meeting. And, okay, anyone for old or new business? Ms. Reese?
I just wanted to remind everyone, too, about the North Monco Holiday Dinner, and to make sure that you are a VP if you're going.
Yes, that is Monday, December 18, at, beginning at 5:00 p.m.
And I just want to make a comment. I want to wish everyone in the Methacton School District community, as well as members of the board here and the administration, and our teachers, staff, and students, a wonderful Thanksgiving holiday.
Thank you. Anyone else for any old, new, anything? Okay, time for courtesy of Thank you. Anyone else for any old, new, anything? Okay. Time for courtesy of the floor and opportunity for residents to make comments on matters that are or may be before the board. The board asks that you keep your comments to three minutes or less. We may choose to respond to matters following the conclusion of the comments.
Good evening. John Andrews, Lower Providence. I was happy to see that the director just noticed that the dates for board members' calendars was blank. A few things. Earlier, the campus planning committee met and Xed out the different items that were of interest to them for, for advancing the high school campus. The number one item was picked by 57 people. Build a state-of-the-art facility and some more verbiage. Very clear, but there were some other items that were not clear. For instance, for the Subcommittee 9, which I was on, for Zone 3 and 4, it said, provide an internal building flow and movement conductive to the educational program. If you've got that, you're probably thinking, what does that mean? And exactly, it's unclear. So it's not transparent. And what it really meant, was mentioned briefly at, at the, at the session. What was briefly meant was that there would be a second floor corridor added between the West Wing and the East Wing. And that would be an improvement that would satisfy a lot of the students' concerns about difficulties of crowding and time limits for getting from parts of the West Wing to parts of the East Wing through the one existing corridor. And then, on the monthly treasurer's report, there's been a change in, in layout specifically deleting the interest rates. Isn't that curious now that interest rates are going, have been going sky-high and, and affecting the economy? And lastly, where we had Bureau Veritas do a facility study for us, I noticed on the list of bills that their elevator, people are doing elevator inspections here, and that if they're an outfit down in Maryland, I'm surprised that there aren't elevator inspectors in the local area.
Thank you for your comments.
Jim Malik, Worcester. Dr. Regina, congratulations. That's really good. Mr. Bricker forgot something in his little discussion, saying how great things are, that you guys are 10% below the index, but we were still overtaxed with you guys being 10% below the index. Multiple years of multimillion-dollar tax increases, even when you were below the index, which means we're being overtaxed. That has to be pointed out. You guys constantly seem to blame requesters for your right-to-know bills. Well, I just hear this executive session announcement, sounds to me like the solicitor is the problem, and you're going to take care of it by suing them. Is that, is that what I heard? Consider litigation for right-to-know bills for your sweet Stevens? Why would that be? I thought it was a requester problem. We all know it's a solicitor problem. The Act One Index, best of my knowledge, came out on September 1 of this year. Nothing from you, Dave, no presentation in September, none in October. But you wait till the election and then have it, this presentation after the election's over? Why didn't we get the presentation back in September, October? Let the public know before they go vote on people that you guys are going to raise taxes 5.3%. And the thing is, you know, you're not doing us any favors by saying, oh, we're not going to go above the index. You really can't go over the index anyway, because if you do, you'll be audited like all those other school districts who got nailed for doing that, because they had surpluses like you do. Only way you managed to not get audited is you never took the index, the exceptions, above the tax increases. So, I think, first of all, you cannot go with 5%. Can't. You have way too much money, you have way too much revenue, you can't even go with 3%. I mean, if you go with 3% and 5%, it's almost 10% in two years. It's absolutely ridiculous with all these multimillion-dollar surpluses. So, you know, somebody's got to sit down and look at this. It can't be 5%, 4%, 3%. People are out here getting hammered. Bills, gas, mortgage payments, and now you're going to throw this on top of everything else for a tax increase? Not good.
Thank you. Anyone else for courtesy of the floor this evening? Final comment, oh, final comments? Yes.
I do have a final comment. A couple of things. One, there was a comment related to the interest rates. That was discussed at the finance meeting, and they are in the minutes, and requested to Mr. Bricker to put the, the interest rates in a, some type of report that will continue to show the interest rates, no matter if they're high or low. And that has already been corrected. Want to clarify the process related to the budget. What is being voted on is not to exceed whatever the Act One Index. It doesn't mean it will be 5.3. It could be 5.3. We have to go through the budget process, but it's declaring your, your intentions based on the very, very preliminary budget, if we're going to need to take exceptions to balance our budget to deliver the educational needs of the district. So it is not a vote to, to already agree to 5.3. I know that's the way it likes to be spun, but that is not what the, the vote is for.
And if I can just clarify, my understanding is that the vote is to not, not take the, what we could be allowed to take, which is 6.53, and that we are going to max at 5.3. Is that correct?
That, that is correct. And so I think it's, it's, should be clear that the way the Act One Index is calculated, it's based on the wages in the previous year. So, so that, that tells us that the cost of, of people and those goods and services are increasing at a rate that would make us likely to need at least 5.3, or in terms of Methacton School District and our additional rising special education costs, need to be able to raise it to 6.53. So I, I want to, I just want to reiterate the fact that when Mr. Bricker presented his presentation, that each year that we're, we're, presented the Act One Index, and the fact that we are eligible for exceptions, generally every other year, we've, we've done a historically very good job of managing our resources and keeping not only below the Act One Index, but, but managing those, those resources in a way that is, is clearly fiscally responsible. So I, I can't say enough about the hard work that the board does, the administration does, and the leadership that Mr. Bricker brings to the process, at the same time, providing a high-quality education for our students. So I, I can't, I can't just iterate that enough. The other part is, I just want to comment on another person's comments about transparency in the Methacton High School Campus Planning Committee process. I, I don't know of another process that can be more transparent. Every document, everything that's been made available is on a shared drive for all of the individuals. We, we have a PowerPoint presentation that has the notes written by every committee on each of those items that were, that were voted on. I don't know how else to make it any more transparent. So if anybody, member of the board can, you know, advise me on how to make that more transparent, you know, I'll be glad to take that advice and work towards that. But I, I believe that we've done a reasonably good job at including everybody, making sure everybody sees it from a fiscal perspective, from a physical perspective, from an operational perspective. And I think we're in a really good position to share that feedback to the board in February of 2024.
Right. And just so people know what that was, every, every subcommittee of that planning process presented what their ideas and what their findings and what their group consensus was for, for the high school campus, and that was presented to all. And then the recommendations were then prioritized by the, by the people who attended. So that's how that worked out. Ms. Perdue?
I did want to say, I'm glad that comment came up about the planning committees, because I did want to say thank you to everybody that participated. I know we had students, teachers, administration, and parents. And I actually had the opportunity to go on, at the meetings, join several of those subcommittee groups, and I was happy to see that people in our community that actually opted to join specific subgroups just because they were experts, this is what they do professionally, and able to give their time to Methacton and provide input when we think about, I believe there was a sewer group, and there were people that actually, this is what they do for a living, and were able to share their time and share their expertise. So I do want to say thank you to everyone that participated. And my, my next question in reference to that, and I think, Dr. Zerby, you spoke about it, is the next steps, right? And I think you said February, we expect to see?
Yes. So, you know, we, we are targeting the work session in February of 2024 to present the, the findings and the recommendations from the committee. That will consist of a written report and a PowerPoint presentation with, with additional recommendations for the board's consideration.
So, and I think you asked a question, how to make it more transparent. I don't have the answer for that. I think we worked really hard. We're trying to engage the community and giving community members the chance to participate. I think, once you provide it, I don't, I mean, seeing what the recommendation were from the team, I am pretty sure, just based on the feedback, there are items that we can work on. I, I don't think require significant or heavy lift from the, the administration. So I'm, I'm looking forward to hearing the feedback in February, just share with the public and some of the things we're looking to do. But I don't have an answer as far as how do we make it more transparent. I think we are working on making it a little bit more, making the process more transparent and involving the public and the students. So I do want to say, I just wanted to say thank you to everyone that participated.
Thank you, Ms. Perdue. Any other final comments from the board?
Real quick, I just, I think someone brought up requesters for right-to-know. And I forgot, guys, do you remember, what was the request we got this week? Did it have 28 things on it or 26? And how many years did it go? Like eight or 10? I don't know. It took me a long time to do a search. Was it one or two right-to-know requests we received this week? Does anybody know? Two? Yeah, I don't know. Huh. It was a lot. It took a lot of time, for years, and nothing ever seems to be found.
Any other final comments from the board? All right, seeing none. I see a motion to adjourn over there from Mr. McGinnis. May I have a second? I see one from Ms. Graff. Thank you so much. This meeting is adjourned.